That'll turn red, and then you can. We'll get through it. It is what it is.
Kitchen, I'm sure, I'm sure you see on Kitchen's notes, I mean, he had those little sticky tabs. Waiting to get to. They began. Yeah, we'll get through it.
Good afternoon. We're gonna get our meeting started. I can see Santa Claus on the back row. Lots of people lined up. I'm sure to well wish us with lots of good greetings for Christmas. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. We're gonna start, call our meeting to order by having the invocation by Pastor Christian Paul, Redemption Point Assembly of God. He's also gonna lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Please come forward.
If you would, bow your head with me. Lord, we thank you for the liberties that allow us to gather here today. We thank you for all those who made today possible. Jesus, we pray for the elected officials, that you will grace them with the wisdom and the favor to lead your people well in their flourishing. We pray as people, we walk in the same standards and excellence we hold our leaders to. We ask that justice, fairness, and love be the markers in which we govern, and how we do all things, and how we lead. We pray for civility and open dialogue that respects our officials and allows the people's voices to be heard and considered. We ask that a blessing upon our county and its officials and its peoples, as we humble ourselves and seek you. Amen. If you guys would say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty being justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call? This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this tenth day of December 2024. An attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Jana Barrett, Commissioners Jav Canard and Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lynn. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. We have a couple of things. If the board would like, we could move item G1, which is the appointment of the new Department of Health Administrator, up to the front. I believe they have someone here from Tallahassee. We also have two other agenda items, E42 and E43 with the Sheriff's Office. And Mr. Administrator Howard, could you also fill us in on any additional items to be pulled?
Yes, C5, the Nature Coast Soccer Club, Inc. agreement. This item will be brought back at a future date. T2, pulled item CPA AA PUD 2024-00014, Local Engineering, Inc. for Nomad RVR LLC. That's gonna be rescheduled to January the 14th, 2025 at 5:05 PM. The rest is just additional information. E1O, Cutting Edge Property Maintenance, Inc. The brief overview in the Budget Impact Section referenced the amount of $27,000. It should be $26,650. E9 is additional information, reclassification of building inspections, plans, examiners. We received a letter of support from the Citrus County Building Alliance. E10, additional information, permit fee schedule, letter of support from the Citrus County Building Alliance we've received. E11, additional information, request for additional staff, Building Division. We received a letter of support from the Citrus County Building Alliance for that item as well. E12, additional information, Building Division boot policy, letter of support from the Citrus County Building Alliance for that one as well. H4, additional information, the 2:00 PM public hearing presentation added from E Care Ambulance Services, Inc. H4, additional information, 2:00 PM public hearing correspondence from Med Fleet Ambulance. K1, additional information, Pirates Cove appraisal appraisals were included in your backup materials for that. N2, additional information, Boards and Committee Liaison Appointment List was added. T1, additional information, the 5:01 PM public hearing, SR44 Interchange Management Area, a letter of support from the Citrus County Building Alliance. T3, additional information, 5:15 PM PUD 2646, Todd Pressman for Chalvoira Sadhan, letter of opposition. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, motion to approve as read into the agenda, or into the record, excuse me.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
Which one do you want to pick?
Canard.
Commissioner Canard, second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's see here. The next thing on our agenda is going to be proclamations. So if you'll, no, we don't have any proclamations. Gosh, that's unusual. All right, so on to consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, and a second by Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public input. Board members, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is going to be open to the public. However, I'm going to preface this. We have a very full agenda this afternoon, with hearings beginning at 1:30 and again at 5:01. So if there is something that you want to speak about, that's on either one of those two public hearings, we would ask that you respectfully wait until we have those agended items. But if you would like to speak anything right now, we'll be open until our first one at 1:30. So anybody open to the public, and we will be closing that at 1:30.
Yes. Part, I'm so sorry, pardon me, but I thought you wanted to move G1 up, since it's super fast to get someone out.
You're right.
Okay.
I got carried away.
I've been in that chair recently. I know how easy it is to do that.
Listen, this is my, this is my actual first meeting. You guys are doing it to me goods. So, all right, so we're gonna go back to G1, appointment of new Department of Health Administrator.
Madam Chair, motion to approve item G1.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. I'm assuming you're the new health director? Would you like to come forward and introduce yourself?
Chair Bays, my name is Mark Lander. I'm with the Florida Department of Health, County Health Systems overseeing the 67 counties. So we appreciate this opportunity to be on here today, and I know that many of you got to work with Gail Gaddash, who is the proposed new candidate for the health officer. And I know she probably wants to say a couple of words, but I just wanted to let you know, she's been through the rigorous process of interviewing with both county health systems, our state surgeon general, our chief of staff. And one of my secondary roles is I'm also the health officer of Marion County, your neighbor. So I really look forward to Gail in this position, because we get to work with her, just as I see Mr. Rubio in the back of the room, as we did with Tito. So, all right, I will turn it over to you, ma'am.
Thank you and good afternoon. I'm looking really forward to working with all of you. Ms. Davis, I worked with you during the storms. I had the opportunity to come up to the board when you approved our millage in the end of July, and since then, I've been here with the three storms and the wonderful staff. And if you don't know, that the Health Department provides about 550,000 services every year, and if it wasn't for that staff, I wouldn't be standing here today, because they have really shown me how much they appreciate this county, and how much they care about your county. And if, if it hasn't been said before, they're here for you, and I want to be able to support them. So I'm honored to be standing in front of you today.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment. Welcome to Citrus County, and you had an impressive resume, and I had an even more impressive phone call this morning with Will Bryant. He couldn't sing your praises enough, and said, just want to make sure there's no issues. I said, absolutely not. So, welcome.
He is my biggest cheerleader.
That he is, that he is.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. We have a motion. I believe it was you, Mr. Canard, Commissioner Canard? Who made the motion?
I made the second. I think it was Canard Davis, I thought.
Canard. Oh, you did. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00. The next on our agenda is going to be moving up E42. Motion to approve E42?
Second.
Chair, can I get clarification? Is that A and B? I'm sorry, yes, A and B.
Yeah, I second A and B.
Thank you. E42 is evidence storage facility fleet budget amendment. Is there any open to the public comment? Seeing none, we'll close open to the public comment. Board members, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00. Next on the agenda is E43, Hurricane Helene and Milton Emergency Payment for the Sheriff's Office.
Motion to approve E43, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Canard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Seeing none.
I need one of your earpieces, so I can hear.
I, do we have one? Hold on. They're gonna get one. They'll bring it back. Board members, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00. All right, now we're gonna go back to open to the public. Good.
We good to go?
There you go.
My name's Bill Antonin. I am president of Club Recovery. And just two, two or three quick things. Number one, we met with the Historical Board last night, and they have given us the okay on moving forward with the plans we have for the beginning of restoration. But I cannot go ahead with anything until I find out where the lease is. We got approved in June by the board, and we still, we signed a lease a little while back, and I have yet to see revision, and my lease at my current place is up February 9th.
Thank you. We'll get you an answer here.
Okay, the other thing is, I would like to let the board know, we are using Mark Hammer, who is in the building and zoning, to be able to fast track our permits through the Historical Preservation Society, so that y'all know who is in charge of granting our permits, if that's okay with you.
He's very, very knowledgeable in that field, so.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Sabrina Watson. Cash Patel's book recently came out. It's titled Government Gangsters. If you haven't gotten it, you should. Lots of crimes are being exposed right here in Florida. Let's take sheriffs, for example. Pasco County Sheriff just lost his case in unconstitutional policing. Hernando County Sheriff is involved in a case over forcing his deputies to attend and participate in swinging parties. Lee County Sheriff just got served with a federal subpoena for money laundering. Chad Cronister just got dumped by Trump for his crimes. Our own county sheriff was recently ousted as well. Anyone see a pattern here? One of the strategies of oppressive regimes is removing one slice of the pie at a time, until the entire pie is gone, just like public speaking. If you have no idea when you may address your public servants, you likely won't do so. I wish to strongly caution the board, with regard to that motion coming up later, and I will address that more. There is a new breed of warrior, folks. Mainstream media is dead, MSNBC is broke up and for sale. Why? They have no viewership, now that the general public has figured out that they peddle propaganda and lies, and not news. The new media's podcasters, videocasters, and social media influencers, and the government gangsters have lost the war on suppressing your ability to spread the truth. Back to that new breed of warrior. New warriors all over the country are being trained, once again, to realize they don't need court loyal attorneys for anything. With proper training, anyone can handle their own business in any of the nation's courts. Let me give you some examples. Mitch Vexler in Texas has discovered a tax scheme happening in at least 47 states, with your property. Tannahaway is traveling the country, serving the states, 37 of them so far, for his Supreme Court case. There are at least four cases in Florida challenging election results. One of the challengers is an ex-DOD employee, and he's found the smoking gun in our fake elections. Shad has found 43 judges without valid oath of office, including a Supreme Court Justice, and he has already filed a federal case right here in Florida. This brings me to the new breed of warrior. Their propaganda press has fallen. They can't silence us anymore. They can't stop us from holding them accountable for their crimes. There is no such thing as blanket immunity, folks. All right, so, the point is, you do not simply have to allow the criminal actions by the government gangsters any longer. You can be taught, and you will have support. You can hear their stories at meetthenewwarrior.com, sign up for class, and Iwanttjointheclass.com, join the study group at jointhestudyingroup.com. Questions, you can email info@286sunshine.com. The new warriors are coming, and we are here to support them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, please. We're working on it, sir. Sir? Please don't speak from the audience. We're working on it. We don't, if you would let us know ahead of time, we could accommodate you quicker, but we're working on it as fast as we can.
Ready? I don't know if I can follow my friend over here, but Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills. Commissioners, I would like to thank the commissioners on their quick response to our hurricane cleanup, and thank you to all the employees that were out in the community, cleaning up and passing supplies out. I would like to welcome our newest commissioner, and I have confidence she will make her decisions with integrity by knowing all the facts. I hope that all of you were made aware, which I found out that he hasn't spoken to you yet, but I had a meeting with Steve Howard, and we had a nice lovely meeting about what's going on in our county pertaining to the fact that the, they are breaking, the builders and contractors are having numerous safety and ordinance violations are being violated daily by builders and contractors. Everything from dumpsters and building material in the right of way, to vehicles parked on the roadway all day. Sergeant Lakota informs me that parking on the roads by contractors is a widespread issue, and the public safety officer that came out were sympathetic that they would get stuck in the sugar sand. This is just a fraction of the violations that were discussed with Mr. Howard. If these issues are not addressed, the county could be held liable, especially with the dumpsters and material in the streets, and the fact that they're not repairing the potholes from the roads that they destroy. I also discussed ways to prevent the violations by adding more building compliance officers to have violations follow from one builder to another job site. In other words, if they get three-on-one job site, the fourth one's automatically gonna get them to a special master. So if you do three-on-one, the next one, since he's already been warned as a builder, the next one gets him automatically. So that would cut back, so we wouldn't need all the extra compliance officers. This would reduce the need for that. You're probably wondering why more complaints on these particular things are not showing up, and that's because of the fact that we can't remain anonymous. Me personally, I'm not worried about it, but there are plenty out there that see these things on a daily basis, and are afraid to call in for retaliation, whether it be from a neighbor or from the county officials, and I don't mean you guys. The only other thing that I would like to know, wishing you all a happy and safe and healthy peaceful holidays, and a Happy New Year, which we won't be doing. But the only other thing is, have you guys made a plan for upping the county flood zone?
Thank you for your comments.
Did I do a good job?
Next up, please. Anyone else to speak?
My name is John Hackney. I'm from Ozella, along with another number of other people here. But I want to speak just briefly about this substantial damage determination letter that, that we received in the mail, and.
If everybody on the wall could, please refrain from speaking. It would be helpful to the speaker. Thank you.
So Diane and I, my wife and I, have lived and worked in Ozella since 2001. And obviously, I just want to, I mean, Ozella's a tremendous community, and unlike any other, it has a, of course, the people make the place, and along with that, we have a tremendous ecosystem, a wonderful geography, and just a great history. Okay, our history goes back into the 1850s. Our schoolhouse started in 1880. We have a number of residents there, still from the Stanlins and the Browns, and the Heads and the DeBusschs, some of those early families. Their relatives are still living there. Our youngest resident is four years old. Our oldest resident is 98. So you have a real diversity there in Ozella. So, well, along with that, you have a diversity of the community. You also have, you know, some million dollar structures, homes down the road from some just fish camps that have been there for years and years. And so obviously, we got this, you know, very aggressive letter from the County Building Commission. And, you know, I know this is not question and answer session, but, you know, who prompted the county to send out such an aggressive and inconsiderate letter? You know, the mandates of this letter are, they're not logical, they're not sensible, they're not reasonable. How can there be a reasonable assessment of the damage to anybody's property by a drive-by by a county employee? I mean, that doesn't make sense to anybody in this room, or anybody, anywhere. So we'll just consider the financial burden and the hassle on the residents, consider that first. How about the financial cost to the county for managing? How about the financial cost to the county for managing the repercussions from a letter like that? Then, okay, you know, best I know, the county has no legal obligation to go by the FEMA guidelines. Now, I don't pretend to know everything about everything about that, but I'm sure there's a whole bunch of considerations about FEMA and what they expect from the county and how they want to administer those things. But the five commissioners are allowed by the state to handle matters that are uniquely local. Y'all have the jurisdiction to handle a lot of those things. And so, apart from some of those minimum requirements of an existing dwelling...
Time is up, sorry, you have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I have a few more? I was interrupted by the, by your comments there.
Ten seconds.
Okay, just very briefly.
Ten seconds.
Some residents for our county have been seriously wounded. We understand the need for a balanced approach between the written standard. The county's done a great job picking up the storm debris and waiving the permit fees, but the county commission working through Mr. Steve Howard should be applying a healing salve rather than salt to wounded.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I went over.
That's okay.
Okay, good afternoon, I'm Gil Phelan from La Canto. You know, this is a sign of the disrespect to, you gave us like two weeks to try to come up with a system where you don't have to stand in line for an hour, you know, because I got, I have knee surgery scheduled. Standing really hurts, but any bakery I've been through has a little machine, you take a number and come up next, but you give us two weeks and then you make us stand here in confusion and pain. It's all a sign of how disdainful and disrespectful pretty much all of you are. And Jeff, you've become totally rhino.
Sir?
Yeah. Your first and foremost obligation is to know and represent the will of the people who elected you. We did not elect you to make decisions contrary to our best interests. I've heard the complaint that people come up and speak and then they leave. You do know you have a video of all this, right, so we can watch at home? We have to get back to work because we have taxes to pay. Do you really think that 70% of the citizens would prefer to wait here for hours to speak? You know the answer to that is no, but you consider it anyway. How arrogant. Imagine a business where you tell your employees you need to speak to them at the start of the next meeting, and you're told that the other people attending the meeting, you know, the ones asking for the owners for money and favors, well, they get to speak first, and you, the owner, need to wait for hours while these people ask you for money. Doesn't matter that the owners took your time off of work without getting paid, well, the people asking for your money are here getting paid. You know, what's wrong with our society today? Have we become total imbeciles in every way? You know, they're not more important than us. They're only here to benefit from the largesse of the taxpayers. I have two jobs. When I'm here, I don't make a dime. We pay your salaries, we feed your families, and you treat us like second-class citizens. And, you know, some people won't even bother to look at you. How in the world did you let this board become absolutely unresponsive to their employers? Trump wants the unelected people to stop having power, but this board's even worse. We elected you, yet you don't have to answer emails, you don't have to answer a phone call, you never have a press conference, we can't fire you, we can't impeach you, we can't recall you. How did that ever happen? Where to blame? What other job in the world can employees treat their bosses with such disdain and disrespect? And now you want to silence the people who pay your salary? Keep open to the public first and uninterrupted. That's another passive-aggressive thing that started, oh, time certain, time certain, it's a way to silence us, we're not idiots.
Next up, please.
Good afternoon, Board, thank you for being here. I'd like to ask you all, of course, my name is Ray Brown, I live in Homosassa. So I ask you all, what did you really get into this office for? Was it to benefit yourself, or was it to benefit the community? Lately, I believe that it's not necessarily benefited the community. I'm here because, Jeff, I've never met you, but I see that you want to eliminate us being able to speak first. Does that benefit you, or does it benefit the people? I believe it benefits the board members and not the people who want to speak. We don't have all day to wait, because sometimes, most of us have a job. Luckily, I have been able to retire, and so I'm able to make it to these meetings, but I know a lot of these people, citizens, don't have that luxury. So I ask you, when you got into politics, did you really get into politics to help us, to help a community, or did you get in to help yourselves? You need to look in the mirror and ask yourself, is this the right thing to do? I believe it's not. I believe that at this point, the citizens should come first, and just because it cuts your meeting down, because there are not going to be as many people at the end of the meeting, doesn't mean we don't have a word. Last time, y'all brought some interesting characters to Inverness. I've been coming here for 38 years, it was a lovely community, and you all are starting to change it. You're changing it by bringing in warlocks, witches, things to this community that was never here before. What are you all thinking? Please, look at the, look at the, look at your constituents, and again, ask yourself, is it to serve us and to help this community, or is it self-serving? I do want to take this time, thank you all for showing up, thank you for being here, and thank you for letting us speak. And please, think of us first, as because those who serve, you know, y'all have to, that's the office you got to. You got in to serve us, and it does not benefit us to be last on the, last to the cake. Thank you all very much. I hope you all have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, and then we're going to break for open, or time certens.
Good morning, my name is Joe Pap, Crystal River resident for 20 years. I'm just here to speak out against the proposition to eliminate public speaking at the beginning of the meeting. I don't understand it, I understand efficiency, I appreciate that, but at what expense? I just urge you not to go through with that, I think it's very important that the public have a time where they can get off their chests, and like everybody else said, I didn't know that I was going to have something to do right after this. I got a phone call, I gotta go. If I didn't have this opportunity now, I wouldn't be able to do it, say anything. Anyway, thank you, have a great holiday.
Thank you, same to you, sir. We're going to break now for our time certain, at 1:30. On the agenda is Street Vacation SB-0, or 2024-000, I think I said four zeros, 2 Pope. This is to conduct a public hearing. Staff is here to make the staff presentation.
I'll go first.
Well, is the applicant here?
I don't know, I don't know what they look like.
Is the applicant here for Pope? Can you please come forward? Hi, yes ma'am. Would you like to explain your request, what you're asking for?
Yes, I, we...
Can you like, state your name for us, please?
Okay, my name is Nancy Pope, and we moved to Homosassa seven years ago, and the home that we live in has a street that is separating us from vacant land that we bought on the other side. There's just a small portion of the road that we wanted to make private, there is nothing else down there except our property. So I learned about what street vacations were, and so I applied for it.
Thank you. Thank you. If you want to find a couple seats on the front row, and then we'll...
Sure. Thank you. All right, this is a street vacation to vacate a portion of West Larchwood Street lying between lots 9 and 11, Block 83, and Lot 1, Block 82 of Town of Homosassa, and I do have a PowerPoint that hopefully will kick on in a second. I know they're working on other things, too. Basically, before I start then, I'm going to go over a little bit, these are usually about 30-second presentations, and I know that, but I'm going to go into a little bit about what the street vacate is today. A street vacate would close a portion of, or all of, a platted roadway, generally, these are paper roads, and what happens with these particular applications is first, they have to go to all the utility companies that may service the area. They might not have, for example, gas in the area, they might not have cable, however, they do get to go to, have to go to those companies and get a written request that they're having no concerns about it. They need an ownership and encumbrance report by a title company saying that, yes, it is indeed dedicated to the public in the plat, and no one has filed a lien on it. At that point, it goes to a very extensive staff review. So what happens here is the engineering division will review that and make sure this does not have a detrimental effect on the county transportation network. This is reviewed by utilities, whether or not it's their service area or not, to make sure it doesn't impact any existing or future utilities. Environmental health reviews this for well-inseptic potential impacts. It goes to land section, which reviews ownership, and our county surveyor and our GIS sections who review the ownership and the legal descriptions proposed. It also goes to emergency operations 911 with the sheriff's office and fire services. All of those inputs are accumulated before you. So I know when I come here, it's usually a 30-second presentation, but that's because I already know that there have been hours and hours of review, and if there's a problem in the process, I don't usually come before you. So you see the ones that are very, very pretty and neat, but it has taken a long time to get to that point. So this picture before you is what is the paper road. This is very much like most of Homosassa, where there's beautiful cross-checker pattern of roadways, but the roadways were placed over top of wetlands and over top of water, and sometimes, unfortunately, in structures. So what you're seeing here, the red area is the portion proposed for vacate. Just to the west, the remainder of this paper street is entirely wetlands. It's 100% wetlands. The blue areas on either side of the road are both owned by this applicant, so as they stated, they would like to have this area open to them. You would never know by appearance that this is actually a road, this is the corner of it, and you can see the wetlands are right off the area that they're using, and it does look like a little driveway, it doesn't quite follow the roadway there, it's curved, they worked around some wetlands. If this application is approved, it would not be a detriment to the transportation network because it runs into wetlands, and it would benefit this particular applicant. So, coming with all that, that's my final presentation. If there's any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, Joanna?
Mm-hmm.
She said that it makes her, it's her property on both sides, and when I look at these, when I look at what was given to us, okay, you said you want to take West Larchwood Street, and you want to take half of it, because it's a 50-foot wide street, and do a vacate on that, from what I was given as backup. And what they're saying is, they want this other street that's only a 25-foot wide one, rather than 50-foot wide one, because their property is across from that and next to the Dan's Clamstand land. So I am 100% confused. What road are they asking for the vacate? Is it West Larchwood Street, or is it the street behind them?
No, it absolutely is West Larchwood Street, it's nowhere near Dan's Clamstand area. The red area on this PowerPoint is the portion of the roadway, it's a 50-foot wide paper road, and they own the properties on either side. So by statute, when you vacate, they do split in half and they go to the property on either side. So the property, the three lots they own to the north would gain 25 feet, and the lot they own to the south would gain 25 feet, and this portion of West Larchwood would disappear as a roadway.
Okay, so you're going to be closing a section of a major road, because that's a 50-foot wide road.
No, yeah, unfortunately, it's not a major road. It, all roads out of Homosassa are 50, although there's some that are 80, but in this particular case, it's used as a driveway.
But the one, the road behind it, between, it is only a 25-foot wide one, and when I look at the other map, when I look at the map on how it's platted out that you gave us?
Mm-hmm.
You got 25-foot ones, you got 50-foot, you got 20. So to me, a 50-foot would be a major roadway for emergency, police, postal workers.
Right, so what you're seeing behind is not a road, it's an alley, and there is a difference, but it's 25 feet, those are throughout Homosassa as well. And we did get approval, the applicant has obtained approval from a recommendation from emergency services 911 and fire services for this vacate.
Okay.
Understood, those are why we go through such a process, to make sure that we're not hurting emergency services and engineering utilities.
That's why it threw me off, when I looked at what I was reading for the backups.
Yeah, it was confusing, okay, I apologize for that.
Okay.
Board members?
Yeah, I just didn't know there was any other questions.
If not, I'm going to open it to the public. Is there any public comment?
Good afternoon, Sabrina Watson. I would just like to point out that this gentleman with a handicap here has been asking for 40 minutes for one of the items that would help him here, so that he would know when he can speak and which item he could speak to. You can speak now, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Carl Locklear. I have lived in the area of the road that they're wanting to vacate since 1968. I've had a real estate license 53 years this year. That means I've taken 26 real estate law courses. I am contemplating buying property down this road. This road was built in the early 70s by the taxpayers of this county. If I had to come in from the other end, let's see, if I had to come in from the far end, that's lowland, it will cost $30,000 to $40,000 to build a road in through there. From this end, they're wanting to vacate, it's already constructed. Oh, yes it is, it is constructed. I know, I was there in the early 70s, so I only have to add maybe 100 feet, and it won't cost me a fortune to do it. This board has sat here through the years and vacated everything in the town of Homosassa, including 2,000 feet on the Homosassa River. A little boy can't even go fish out there on private property. Six months ago, you vacated the street going into the state forest, which the Division of Forestry used to access their land. Now they can't even use that road because it's gated up, because you didn't know the facts. One of you did say, should we have a meeting? And one of you said, oh no, let's not do that, we may learn too much. You need to know the facts here. I'm concentrating buying property, and I want this road as access to that property. I have a right to get to it, I should not have to spend $30,000, $40,000 to build a road right away, when this one is already here. She wants this vacated so she'd know people drive by her property. Well, she should have bought a place on the Amazon somewhere, then nobody drive by her property, but she bought here, knowing that road was there when she did it. So I'm going to ask you, do not vacate this street. That's not helping the public to vacate this street, it ain't going to be helping any. And I will not buy that property if I got to spend $30,000, $40,000 to build a road to get to it, when this one is already here. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there any further public comment? One, one second. Can I let him speak again? The applicant?
That's the applicant.
Okay. Okay, come on.
Hi, my name is Ronald Pope. I'm the owner of the property. And if you look on, oh, you changed the screen there. But we, we own all the, all the property around, around Larchwood. So...
No, you don't.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, direct your comments to me, please, and sir.
And I just, I'd just like to say that the, the other end of Larchwood that comes out on Woodland Place, it's all, all in the woods. There is no, there is no developed land back there. Him, him building a...
Mr. Locklear?
Yes.
Please refrain from speaking.
Him building a road, well, there's no, there's no road to, to build because it's, it's part of the wetland. So we have five different plots that make up our entire property. And, you know, I, I, basically, what we're doing is we're turning a public road into a driveway. Because once you come off of Court Avenue, it's, there's, there's really no traffic there. There's one way in, and then if you want to get out, you got to back up or turn around and go back out the way you came. There is, there is no Larchwood that intersects with Woodland Place. And I know, I know Mr. Locklear, he's our neighbor. He's been our good neighbor for the, for the past seven years. And he has a, he has a home on Woodland Place. But this doesn't affect him. He has, he has no need to go back into the swamp. And there's no, no access there. So we wanted to vacate the, the part of the property that is essentially our driveway. We don't want strangers walking down our driveway because we own all that land around Larchwood and Court Avenue, all the way to, all the way to Woodland Place. We have the big corner plot up there, too. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I need you to explain something to me, please, okay? If you look at this sheet, what sheet is that? What number? It is page eighteen fifty-three of two-two-six-zero. Okay? And if you compare that to page one-eight-four-five?
Yeah, that probably was the confusion. This is actually something that was provided by the applicant as part of their application request. But the actual approve, the actual act, that was confusing, and staff had to clarify that, too. But if you look at the eighteen forty-five, that actually shows the property proposed for vacation.
So where, how did this come about, then?
They, they submitted this, so because they submitted it, it's part of the application request, although it's inaccurate. And we had to clarify and get that figured out with them. This was, although it says GIS map, it's something they printed off off the Internet and then highlighted and turned in, even though it doesn't really reflect what's being asked for completely. We fix, we fixed that. I could have taken that out or stamped it superseded. I probably should have for clarity.
Because that looks like it's coming from the county's GIS, is the way it makes it look.
Right, it was a print-off from the Internet. That's what it looks like when they print off. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
Let's go to Janet.
Can you please come through the chair first? Go ahead.
Can I, can I speak to...
You're acknowledged.
Okay.
Can you pull your microphone closer, please? Thank you.
According to page eighteen forty-five of the two-two-six-zero. Okay, I know where the yellow is that they want vacated.
Correct.
All right, oh, one, is that their property, yes or no?
Yes, it is.
Okay, eleven, ten, nine. What about two and three on the next? Because she said they have five lots. And I, when I'm looking at all these papers, I'm trying to figure out, where are they getting, they own five lots?
I think, I think Mr. Pope was actually talking about eight to the west. Because he said they had property on Woodland in the corner. I think he might have been talking about that. I do not think they are the owner of two, three, and four. Those don't abut the application site.
Well, on this one, it's two and three that they own. And that one, you know, and you said that one's irrelevant.
Right. I should have stamped that superseded. I apologize.
Okay. And when I, and still, when I look at this, West Larchwood is a, is a wide street as opposed to the alleyway behind it. Okay? And I, I'm still very confused at, I know they want to close off, I know what they want to close off. Okay? But for the county to give that much freedom, and on one side you got West Larchwood, and on the other you got, I mean, it's a main road for that area. Now, I know some of it's wetlands and some of it's not, and it's not developed yet. That doesn't say that ten years from now, it's not going to be developed. Okay? Also, they have, the way it looks, they have their house on nine and ten, okay? And they also have a shed on, on number nine. Number eleven, they don't have anything. What if they decide to sell off eleven?
What about it? I'm, I'm not seeing the question. I'm sorry.
If they were to sell off eleven, who would get that vacated land that was the street? Does it go with the house?
No, it splits in half, so half of it goes to nine, so part of it goes to ten, part of it goes to eleven. The twenty-five feet abutting those lots go into those adjacent lots.
Well, that, that's why I'm confused. The thing is fifty, they're asking for only twenty-five of the fifty?
No, they're asking for all fifty, but twenty-five of it goes to the abutting lots to the north, and twenty-five goes to the abutting lot to the south.
Okay. So, I, I'm, I understand what you're saying. Okay, and I, I'm just going to hold off.
Can I close? Board members, do you have any further comment to this? If not, I'm going to close.
Yeah, I got a following.
I'm going to, sir. I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members, what are your wishes?
Madam Chair, based on competent substantial evidence, I make a motion that we approve SV two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-two.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, I call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes four-one. You're very welcome. Thank you. Next on the agenda is H-two, another public hearing of intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assessments.
Chair, Commissioners, Carlton Hall, interim Public Works Director. So H-two is, as you mentioned, the intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assessments. It's the same system that we've used for the last decade, and there are no changes.
Mr. Locklear, I think I've been very kind. I really need you to refrain from speaking because we can't hear up here, and it's disruptive to the rest of the, the board. Sir? What did you find out? Anything? I believe they're working on it. My apologies.
So it's the same system we used in the past for the past decade for collecting of non-ad valorem assessments.
And I'm sorry, I got so discombobulated here. So this is for...
H-two.
I, I understand, but this is for the fire, the roadway maintenance improvements?
Any non-ad valorem assessments that we, that we place, this is the method that we use to do.
For all of them. Okay, thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing. We're going to open it up to the public. Does anyone have anything to say from the public? If not, we're going to close open to the public. Board members?
Madam Chair, motion to approve H-two-B.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further comment from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we have Commissioner Finnegan out of the room. She'll be back. We'll finish that up. All right, the vote passes. We're moving on to H-three. It is to conduct a public hearing on an ordinance of Citrus County pertaining to manatee protection zones. Carl, you're up again.
So this, this protection zone is one that we had in place in the past, right around the Ford Island Trail Park boat ramp. FWC, when they went out to evaluate and take reading on all of those signs, they, they noticed that they weren't in quite the right location. Those signs were installed thirty-plus years ago before there was GPS that the county could utilize. So they didn't like the, the spots where they were exactly, so they removed them. And this is to set the ordinance so that those signs can be put back.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before you open the public hearing, I need to read the title of the ordinance.
All right, thank you.
So at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, relating to boating regulatory zones for the protection of manatees, amending chapter sixty-four, article one, section sixty-four dash seven, entitled "Manatee Protection Zones", providing for severability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Madam Chair, Carl, just for the, just for the public's information, this is simply moving, setting in place the manatee protection zone simply to move those idle speed zones on Crystal River back to where they were, what, two years ago?
Correct.
Before FWC moved them. So that, this, the idle speed zone will then, again, incorporate the, the canal where boats come in and out of the ramp there.
It's actually a slow-speed zone.
Okay.
But it, and the signs that were there weren't quite in the right exact spot for FWC, and that's why they removed them. In discussions with FWC, they understand that those signs are needed. So they're going to put those back in at their own cost, at no cost to the county. But this is allow us to put the ordinance in place to have those slow-speed zone signs put in for the manatee protection.
And we're not expanding that slow zone over, beyond what it's been for the last twenty years?
Correct, it's exactly the same.
Except for these last two, where they narrowed it down.
Correct.
We're going to open this up to the public. Is there any public, I think I did this already, didn't I?
No, you're, you're correct.
Okay. That I did. That I did open it up already and closed it.
No, you're, you're proceeding correctly by opening it up now.
There's a lot going on up here.
I'm sorry.
So we're going to open it up to the public for any public comment on this H-three. Seeing none, we'll close open to the public. Board members?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve H-three.
We have a commi...
H-three-B, correct.
H-three-B, yes.
A and B?
A and B, both.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Barrett.
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further public comment? Board comment. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-oh. Can we go back to H-two? Diana?
Aye.
Thank you. We have three minutes, so we're going to take one open to the public. Hi there, how are you today?
Good, good. My name is Pete Horner. My wife and I have lived here for two and a half years. This is in regard to proposition H-five, taking, taking away the people's right to get up here and, you know, say their mind. I'm kind of surprised that something like this has even come into a vote. In many places around the world, citizens have no right to openly engage their government. We are blessed in this country that we can. In my opinion, H-Five is a direct attack on our First Amendment rights by people voted in to represent and/or govern us, and it should not pass. Anyone voting for this right to be taken away, in my opinion, should be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got time for one more.
Good afternoon, John Labriola. I'm also here to talk about the getting rid of open to the public. I rise in opposition to that idea because, first of all, I've, over the last few day, a few, couple of weeks, actually, I've gone through agendas for various counties. Almost all counties in Florida allow an open to the public at the beginning of meetings. And it's understandable why, because a lot of people, but, you know, we, we're not here, we don't get paid when we're here. The idea that we need to get rid of the open to the public in order to allow staff to just come in and speak their piece and then come out, and not to use up, use up their, their time, is ridiculous because staff is going to get paid whether they're here or whether they're back in their office. But the public doesn't get paid to be here. So you really need to put the public first, not at the end of the meeting, as if they're, you know, at the bottom of the barrel, as if they're not important. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, hold on a second. So the, the, if this, if this radical change is adopted, we will have to wait until the end of the meetings, when the room is nearly empty, to address the commission on items that we care about. And you can then choose to ignore us, as you often do at the end of the meeting. It's not a solution to say that the public can email commissioners, because many of you ignore our emails. Besides, a commission meeting is the only time when we, the public, can address all of you and hear your feedback. The, you, you commissioners are supposed to represent the people, not just county employees. Putting us at the very end of the meeting, as I said, makes us feel like we're the bottom of the barrel, which is very disrespectful. I, I suggest that you table this item, but specifically, now, one of the things that I've noticed is the, the ordinance currently states that the items that are addressed here by the public have to be under the jurisdiction of the board. Sometimes you have people come up here and they start talking about candidates for public office, which is not under, under the jurisdiction of the board. If the, if the chair would simply say, I'm sorry, ma'am, this is not under the jurisdiction of the board, you could eliminate a lot of the problem of people coming here and wasting your time. But when it's an item that people come to talk about something that you can do something about, whether it's to pass a resolution, whether it's something to do with the library, this is something that you need to listen to. And it needs, something that you need to listen to at the beginning of the meeting, not force people to wait until the very end of the meeting when nobody is here. So I would ask you again to please, please forget this item, please let it, let it go, do not pass this item. And instead of passing this item, pay closer attention to enforcing the ordinance that you have today that allows you to say only items that are under the jurisdiction of the board get to be heard. So thank you very much for listening to me, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it is now two-oh-one, and our public hearing for E-Care is up. And as we're about to begin this scheduled public hearing, I believe it's important that our board set out the hearing procedures. Our code is silent to the procedures, so I'd like the board to discuss and determine how we should proceed. The lack of procedure is among other issues, caused me to seek amendment of our code. The lack of procedure is among other issues, caused me to seek amendment of our code, as you have saw under my agenda item. For now, for this public hearing, I would like to suggest that the applicant have a 20-minute time slot. Any potential county COPCN holder who wishes to address the board with a 20-minute time slot, any potential healthcare providers, assisted living facilities, or skilled nursing facilities with a five-minute time slot, and general public with three minutes. Board members, what are your comments on this process?
Madam Chair, I like what you've laid out there. I would like to see the county's current COPCN holder come last. Naturally, the applicant would present their side first. If there are other folks, the, you know, ALFs or whoever else is going to take one of those five-minute time slots, I'd like to see them follow the applicant. And then the county's current COPCN holder come last, to be able to answer, not only present the current situation, but to be able to answer any current concerns that were raised by the applicant or by any of the two five-minute time slot takers, if you will. And again, I just, I want to remind the board, I don't want this to come across as it's going to, but remind the board that the onus falls on the applicant to prove that there's a need. We're going into a bit of uncharted waters here by going through this process, but I'm glad you've got it under your agenda item to get this cleaned up for next time, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have any other comments?
Madam Chair. I like the way you had it set up initially, because to me, it's fair. You've got the people that are going to present, the ones that are here, the five minutes of each, the three to five for the other. It gives ample time, and it gives it in wonder, it's not just one-sided. The way that, you know, Commissioner Kennard is saying, we're going to hear everybody for it, then everybody against it. And then we'd hear the people from, you know, the audience, you know, our constituents from the audience. I'd rather hear the two people that are presenters, the two people that are going to do EMS if we approve it, go first. And then people that they have contacted, give their reasons why they agree, yeah, they should be here, or we don't need them, or whatever, and then have the audience give theirs. So I like your plan initially.
All right.
Madam Chair, I agree with Commissioner Barrett.
Diana?
Well, I like your time limits, but I like what Commissioner Kennard is saying, because as we had said at the last, well, I said at the last board meeting, because we couldn't seem to make a decision, I think that should have been done then. It's not, it's at a hearing, and I warned everyone, this is going to be a bloodbath, and I don't want to see either person or anybody in the future coming to get a COPCN, and it's about knocking somebody else instead of proving the need. We're supposed to be hearing approving a need. But everything that seems to have flooded my email or set before me literally two minutes before we started this meeting is the opposite of what it should be. So your time limits are fine, but I would side with Commissioner Kennard about the layout, just to try to keep everything the way it should be.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Finnegan, I appreciate that. And I'm going to disagree with my colleagues on the order of presentation only as a matter of efficiency, because if these last two or three or 10 five-minute placeholders that come up raise concerns that may or may not be valid, if we, if we already have the current holder having presented, then we either need to bring them back to answer each one of those, and it draws the process out, or they don't ever get to respond in a public hearing setting to what was put out there. Essentially, there'd be no boundaries on what somebody could come up and present, whether it's based on fact or opinion. And those are things that in a public, a public hearing setting, these things should be based on fact. So that's why I would like to see a county's current holder present last, simply being able to answer any concerns that are brought forward. I think that's a fair way of doing this. And then the board can have our discussions and decide if we think that the applicant has proven a need.
All right, I, looks like I'm going to be the straw picker here. So I am going to go with Ecare. We'll present for 20 minutes. Then we will listen to all the five-minute stakeholders and the general public. And then we'll go, I'm sorry, we're going to go back to Med Fleet for 20 minutes, and then we'll go to general public for three minutes.
Very good, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, one other item that hasn't come up is whether the witnesses are going to be sworn.
Yes, they will be sworn, unless my board members have a problem with that.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to address you regarding the COPCN application for Ecare Ambulance Inc. My name is Mike Warguillas, representing Ecare Ambulance.
Can I stop you for just one second? We need to swear you in.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Clerk, are you going to do that, or shall I? How many, do you have others that are going to be testifying?
Yes.
On your behalf? If everyone could stand and raise their right hand? Do you swear, or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ecare Ambulance seeks to prove that additional ambulance services are not only necessary, but critical for the well-being of Citrus County residents. We have provided the board with a presentation, including statistics from Citrus County, that will briefly, that I will briefly summarize. Citrus County is experiencing significant growth since 2022. The population has experienced constant growth annually, with further growth projected through 2025 and beyond. This growth, combined with our county's aging population, underscores the need for additional resources to meet increasing healthcare demands. The county hosts three hospitals, nine nursing homes, 21 assisted living facilities, two hospice centers, two dialysis centers, two adult family care homes, behavioral health facilities, and an intermediate facility care for developmentally disabled. These facilities collectively represent over 2,900 inpatient beds, generating substantial demand for non-emergency medical transportation. Ecare Ambulance conducted extensive research, visiting 90% of the facilities, to assess their needs. My colleagues will expand on their findings and the number of facilities requesting to contract with Ecare Ambulance to help with their unmet demand for non-emergency ambulance services. The findings reveal clear unmet demand for additional non-emergency ambulance services. Facility representatives consistently express concerns about frequent delays and limited availability from the current provider. Our estimates, a daily demand of 35 to 50 non-emergency ambulance trips distributed as follows. 30 to 50 from hospitals, five to six from nursing homes, three to five from assisted living facilities, three to four from hospices, three to four from dialysis centers, and one to two from home health agencies. The county fire department also reported increased inter-facility emergency transports, and two hospitals recently applied for a COPCN to operate ambulance services for their own patients in Citrus County, highlighting the urgent need for a more robust non-emergency ambulance service. Additionally, Med Fleet has experienced a consistent increase in call volume over the past three years, further evidencing the strain on the current resources. Currently, the sole provider has capacity for approximately 18 trips daily in Citrus County, and often relies on shared fleet, which poses risks when resources are unavailable from neighboring areas. The lack of redundancy compromises public safety. As a community, Citrus County should prioritize resources availability over dependency. Citrus County also ranks below state and national averages in population health and accessibility, as reported by the U.S. News and World Report. Adding Ecare Ambulance to the healthcare system will significantly enhance service availability and reliability, ensuring timely access to care for all residents. In matters of public safety and health, there is no such thing as too many resources. Approving this application will directly benefit Citrus County by addressing a demonstrated gap in non-emergency medical transportation, and ensuring better service and growing the aging population without adding additional costs to Citrus County. Ecare Ambulance is an established, financially stable, non-emergency transportation provider committed to expanding its operations to Citrus County. The Ecare Ambulance investment in the Citrus County community is both significant and deliberate, with a planned $3.5 million investment aimed at enhancing the county's healthcare infrastructure and supporting its economic growth. The location of Citrus County is a key part of our future strategic expansion in Florida. After visiting the area several times, our president not only identified a critical need for additional medical transportation services, but also fell in love with the community, its natural beauty, and the welcoming spirit of its residents. These visits confirmed both the demand for expanded services and our desire to contribute to the health and well-being of this vibrant and growing community. Ecare, Ecare's vision for Citrus County includes the operation of a fleet of state-of-the-art ambulances equipped with certified equipment and staffed by highly-trained professionals. We are ready to deliver comprehensive non-emergency medical transportation services solutions that will reduce service delays, improve response times, increase availability of resources, enhance emergency preparedness, and foster economic growth through job creation and local partnerships. It is important to note that the existing provider may attempt to discredit our research and surveys, claiming additional providers are unnecessary. However, such claims only underscore how out of touch they are with the current needs of Citrus County. Our surveys are grounded and direct feedback from 90% of the healthcare facilities in the county, all of which have consistently highlighted the challenges caused by delayed services and limited availability. Med Fleet's shortcomings in meeting these needs have been exposed, and their recent actions suggest reactive attempt to address gaps only because Ecare has brought attention to these critical issues. Notably, Med Fleet just posted job openings for Citrus County. This late response further demonstrates the existing provider's inability to proactively meet the growing demands of the community. While the current provider may assert that they also offer wheelchair and non-medical stretcher services, it is important to clarify that these services are not being offered to facilities in Citrus County, leaving significant gap in service availability for patients who rely on them. This disconnect underscores the need for a new provider that listens to the community and addresses the full scope of its healthcare transportation needs. It is important to emphasize that Ecare Ambulance is not here to displace Med Fleet as the sole provider in Citrus County. Rather, our aim is to explore how we can collectively work together to enhance response times and improve service availability for the community by complementing the existing provider. We can ensure no patient or facility experiences unnecessary delays or lacks access to critical medical transportation services. Ecare Ambulance has already secured a long-term facility located in 4611 West Cardinal Street in Homo Sasa, a site designed to accommodate future growth and operational needs. We have earmarked six active ambulances and will maintain two spare vehicles to ensure uninterrupted service. Our fleet will also include critical care ambulances, as well as ambulances specially equipped for neonatal and pediatric transfers, addressing a broad spectrum of medical transportation needs. Our commitment to the community extends beyond transportation. Ecare Ambulance will hire local staff, creating 48 jobs for EMTs, paramedic dispatchers, office, and supervisor personnel. Operating an emergency medical dispatch center in Citrus County, offer training for EMS professionals, and expand community outreach initiatives. These initiatives outscore our commitment to being a true community partner, actively involved in the well-being of its residents we serve. By expanding into Citrus County, Ecare Ambulance seeks not only to meet the urgent need for additional emergency medical transport services, but also to become an integral part of the county's growth and resilience. We are ready to make this investment and partner with Citrus County to ensure a healthier, safer future. Ecare Ambulance has a proven track record, already helping improve response times in Monroe County, and we are ready to serve Citrus County residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Kaitlin Armstrong, I'm the Director of Operations for Ecare Ambulance. I want to talk about what was asked of us, to demonstrate the convenience and necessity. My coworkers discussed the growth, the poor state of health, and some of the numbers. The definition of convenience is something that's useful, make things easier, quicker, or more comfortable. Our ambulances and equipment are new, our facility boasts room for significant growth, in-house dispatch, sleeping quarters for on-duty crews, and in-house training facility, strategically centered in the county, as is our staff, open to the public 24 hours a day. Accessibility in all those forms makes this faster, easier, and more comfortable for patients. We bring eight ambulances, one to include NICU, because in Citrus County, over 30% of first trimester pregnancies have received no prenatal care. That puts them at a high risk for, a high, a high risk of being, having a hospital stay. We bring two critical care to handle hospital-level medications and equipment, such as blood transfusions. So when a critical patient needs rapid transport and Med Fleet may be stretched thin, they no longer pick up the phone and ask for a rescue to transport, or send a nurse with their equipment. This allows hospitals maintain their staffing. Eight more ambulances means faster response times to keep up with the increasing demand, including natural disasters and seasonal times, while maintaining simultaneous 911 responses. Sharing the workload reduces the strain on current EMS teams. While it might not be obvious to all, patients that need to be moved from one facility to another, such as a hospital to a nursing home, are occupying a hospital bed until transport. This means EMS units stand against a wall with their patient on a stretcher until that patient is transported, impacting the 911 system, the hospital staff, the patient waiting to leave, and the patient actively having an emergency. Introducing another provider enhances coverage in the underserved areas by reducing response times. It brings healthy competition, and in this case, leads to more affordable rates and improved customer service. Residents can feel more secure knowing that there are sufficient resources to handle their needs and have choices when it comes to their healthcare. The necessity. I've met with mostly approximately 37 medical facilities in Citrus. Throughout my meetings, the representative of each facility was provided an informational flyer of our services, and that we hoped to learn how we could help them if we get our license, as well as that we were conducting surveys for the hearing, and a paper was filled out. All these surveys required adaptation to cater to the specific needs of a variety of facilities. However, information was transposed. If a question was not answered, the question remained blank. These revealed that 34 facilities and three hospitals were in favor of adding another non-emergency medical provider, and even more specifically stated that, yes, adding another non-emergency transport provider would benefit their facility. It was also important that we speak with the people this board represents that might not have a medical need right this moment. We surveyed over 400 residents. It was explained in great detail the difference in 911 versus the transport that we offer. 100% of them stated they're in favor of adding a non-emergency ambulance provider. And 100% believe there's a need for another provider, because it would improve existing services. Within the surveys, for the sake of time, I'll group the numbers that are close. We found 95 to 98% complained of late arrivals, inaccurate ETAs, high costs, lack of availability, and not available 24/7. 88% stated they were unable to contract for evacuations. 47% noted poor customer service. In addition to medical facilities, I've also met with the sheriff, the Department of Health, and the school board to discuss prevention to keep our residents safe, routine public education in underserved populations, and creating a direct pipeline through the existing education system in Citrus County to keep jobs in Citrus. This board asked for numbers, and we've brought numbers. What I will make clear is when it comes to numbers, there's a large group of facilities that flat-out stated, "I will not use Med Fleet" for multiple negative interactions. Attempts to resolve the issues were futile, and they gave up. So I ask you this, how do I make these numbers tangible? I cannot tell you how many times they did not pick up a phone and call, but what I can tell you is that I've executed nearly a quarter of your facilities. I've executed contracts with one quarter of your facilities in Citrus County. That represents over 400 patients that would prefer to give Ecare a chance than to pick up the phone and call Med Fleet. I believe in transparency and accountability. There's no place that Med Fleet is required to report to, except themselves. We conduct bi-monthly meetings with facilities in person to make sure that we are meeting and exceeding expectations. I believe Citrus should include regular meetings conducted at a higher level to monitor performance with penalties of reallocation of contracts. In the presentation you were, you've been given, the numbers were provided to substantiate the need. In the presentation you have been given, the numbers were provided to substantiate the need. And the additional documents we provided evidence to refute the claims made by Medfleet. The fire chief has made his recommendation that you approve our COPCN. You've heard from facilities through emails and surveys from the fire chief and from the public through emails. Adding resources causes no harm, however, not providing enough can cost lives. I urge you to put public safety first and allow Ecare to raise the standard beyond the minimum. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Alberto. I'm the attorney for Ecare Ambulance. I just want to be 100% clear that we are not advocating for a free-for-all when it comes to COPCN applications. What we are advocating for is to make sure that there's adequate service, to make sure that the need is being met. And it's not just about the necessity, it's also about the convenience. It's part of the COPCN. It's necessity and convenience. So just from my point of view and the arguments that I would be making is that the standard review, when you're looking at the denial or granting of a COPCN, is based on arbitrary decisions. The court has defined necessity not as an absolute or indispensable necessity, but rather as a reasonable necessity to meet the public need and convenience. And I will argue that the current provider does have a burden to prove the necessity and to make sure that they're meeting the need. There's a burden shifting. Once we meet our need, the shift back to the current provider. Legally, as well, an adverse impact to the current provider is trumped by the necessity and convenience. So that should not be a factor if there's an issue in necessity and convenience. Currently, as was discussed, the 911 system is being used as the backup for the private providers, and that's probably the reason why you didn't hear any objections from either the fire county or any of the cities. So please take that into consideration as well. My argument for today would be that a denial of the COPCN for Ecare Ambulance would be arbitrary for several reasons. First of all, less than a month ago, the board found that there was a necessity and granted a license, and that was right after our initial hearing. Also, Medfleet has admitted themselves. There's delays. There's missed calls. They have admitted this. They've provided this information to you through their supplemental material. As well, three ambulances are just not enough to do evacuations and to service 37 facilities, as well as the hospitals, behavioral health, hospice, dialysis centers. There's just not enough here. Additionally, I would argue that Ecare has shown the need because we have secured the contracts, as my colleagues have said. We have the contracts. That's the reason why there's a necessity. Ecare has experienced the financial ability and the vehicles to get started right away, as our CFO has mentioned, who has over 30 years of experience in the ambulance industry. Again, this is not to, in their own words, slam any kind of company here, but we need to look at the deficiencies and we need to look at the ordinance. The ordinance is very clear, and it's been brought up in different hearings before. Section 3821-F3, the rights and duties that come with a COPCN application. When you have a COPCN license, you have the duty and you have to provide continuous and uninterrupted service. Medfleet has admitted that there is delays and there's missed calls, missed transports. So that is in violation of the ordinance. They also have to provide services regardless of the ability of the patient to pay. That's also been an issue in the county. And these are two things that are written in the county's ordinance. I know that Medfleet does try to minimize the issues with missed calls, but even one missed call is a violation. And if that's your family member receiving a missed call, that's not something that would be acceptable. Medfleet mentions that, and they're making a big distinction with our surveys regarding wheelchair service. Even the big companies, AMR, they do wheelchair service. Ecare is here not just for the lucrative transports, but even the ones that are not as lucrative. We will say that Ecare even offers an indigent program, so people that don't even qualify or that qualify and are not able to pay for transports, we offer that kind of service for the residents of Citrus County. They say when someone copies what you're doing, that's usually the highest form of flattery. And we're happy to say that even in our short time here in Citrus County, you know, there's been improvement. Medfleet has joined the Chamber of Commerce. They're giving back to the community now, just like we have been doing since we've been here, since day one. And I do want to talk about the numbers. We have reached out not just only to the local people, but we've also reached out to corporate centers. So for example, for HCA, we've reached out to the transfer center. The transfer center is located in Broward County. In the transfer center, they're responsible for confirming the transports for interfacility. They have confirmed long wait times. We have talked to the brokers. We talked to Florida Community Care. We talked to Simply Health. Again, we talked to Dahlia. She told us there's long wait times. So the surveys, the long wait times that we have submitted all show that there's a necessity. So just in sum, I do want to say that Ecare has shown that there's a necessity. That burden now moves over to Medfleet. Medfleet has not shown that they're meeting the need. They haven't provided the data to show that they're meeting the need. In fact, they have admitted, again, that there's wait times, that there are delays, that there are missed calls. They've been admitting this since 2023, when previous applicants have come here. We're here to make sure that no one gets left behind. We're looking not just at the hospitals, but we're looking at all the medical facilities in Citrus County. And we want to provide the highest quality of service to these individuals. We have provided amazing service in Monroe County. The wait times have gone from over an hour down to about 15 minutes. And something that we're proud of as well is that we not only educated the public, but we also educated the facilities. The facilities are able to provide more services at less expense because of the education that we have provided them. And because we work together with the county, because we work together with our competitors in Monroe County, we make sure that everybody has short ETAs, that there's no one left behind, and that we take care of everybody in the county. We need to think about everybody, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to the five-minute ruler, so that would be any healthcare providers, assisted living facilities, or skilled nursing facilities. Anyone that would like to speak on this, please step forward, and you will have five minutes. For the record, give me one second.
I believe that you said everyone was going to be sworn in. Is this the order that you had announced?
Ecare first, then five minutes, and then Medfleet.
To make it convenient, can I have everyone that's going to testify stand at the same time, and then I'll administer the oath, and they can just remind you when they come up whether they've been sworn?
Any of those that I just called forward, can you step forward and take the oath?
Raise your right hand. Miss Beatty, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't see your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? The truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Keith Gould. I live in Hernando, Florida. Also been working here at all three of the emergency rooms for the last six years. And yeah, Medfleet does come and pick up our patients. Medfleet does come and pick up our patients, sometimes very good. Sometimes there's delays. Sometimes there's huge delays. It all depends. Sometimes our staff stays on hold for a while just trying to get through. But it's because their ambulances, they don't have a lot based up here in Citrus County. They're mainly based in Hernando, and so a lot of times they have to come and come up here, especially when we have critical cares or ACLS. If one ambulance is working and the other one down there is busy, we have to wait till either the one that's busy drops someone off, comes back, or the other one finishes what they're doing and gets up here to Citrus County. So it does make delays. Another issue I wanted to address was in the last meeting, it was brought up the fact that the county commissioners controlled the amount of hospital beds or hospitals in the county. And they were talking about that so you don't get oversaturation and stuff. Actually, that rule was in effect until they did a study that found that we were thousands of hospital beds short, and that rule law was revoked. And so at this point now, they do not need permission to build more hospital beds. It's just more of a zoning building permit type issue. And that was because they found that local county commissioners, even in the big counties like Miami-Dade and Broward, didn't have the information, didn't have the resource to really know how many hospital beds were needed. And they realized that actually having more beds actually increased competition. And now you have the players that were there trying to offer better services rather than, you know, having people come in there and go, okay, well, I'm just going to come in here and try to make money. So adding a second ambulance is not going to take away anything from them. There are places now that are trying to use alternate services or trying to find other transport. There's so much transport here, and with the county growing, I think it's only going to enhance both of them. The overall transport times are going to go down. If Medfleet can't get there for an hour and a half, you call Ecare. If they can get there, if Ecare can't get there for an hour and a half, you call Medfleet. So you have a choice, you know, whoever can get there first is going to get there first. So it, you know, will benefit the hospitals, benefit nursing homes, benefit the community. And, you know, this is America. We do like, you know, competition. You know, it's been known in a lot of areas where they limit, when they limit resources to just one, like in socialist countries, how prices always go up, you know, quality goes down. So in Citrus County, we do have very long wait times. I've worked in other counties, and this is the county that has had the longest wait times for ambulances to arrive of any of the counties I've worked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcus Smith. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at HCA Florida Citrus Hospital. So today, we listened to Ecare give their presentation, and I, my comments are that of a concern of integrity of the data. I polled my team. I called the Director of Operations for our East Florida Transfer Center that was mentioned, and none of us are aware or have any recollection of taking the survey where we voiced displeasure with our current provider. I can say, having worked with Medfleet in multiple counties, they're a great partner, and we have had very, very good service from them. When issues arise, they address them very, very quickly. So I do have some concern. None of our names are on there. It simply says HCA Citrus, so just a disturbing concern that we drew there.
Appreciate your coming. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Glenn Pichet. I'm the CEO for Clear Sky La Canto. I live in La Canto. And I'd like to start off by, when I first moved to La Canto a couple of years ago, it was kind of difficult to get a contract with the current provider. I had to beg, and it felt like just not very responsive. And that being said, at the risk of, you know, they are providing services, we've had some mishaps. And it's not a good thing in healthcare, as you know, Jeff. We have, timing is everything. Timeliness is really important. So just encourage you all to embrace competition. It'll be a good thing. Quality will drive things. There's no process in place right now that I'm aware of to review processes and when there's mishaps. I like the, one disturbing thing was I did finally get a contract, but I wasn't aware that my prices were hyperinflated to the tune of 30 to 100% from Medicare costs. Now, that bothers me. I'm trying to provide jobs for the citizens of Citrus County, and when those costs are that exorbitant. Like, for example, our mileage cost was $17 a mile, and Medicare is $8.50 a mile, so it's a big difference. I would just encourage you to embrace competition. We've had some mishaps. We can't afford that, and we need timeliness. We need people that are available, that when you call them, they're going to deliver for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Becky Beatty. I'm the Director of Nursing Operations at Clear Sky Rehabilitation Hospital in La Canto. I personally like the people that work for Medfleet. I've known them for quite a long time. But, and I certainly am not here, this is not a bloodbath. This is, we're talking about people's lives. I have known them for a long time. I've known them personally with the position that I have. I'm very concerned because I see no processes with this current company. What is the processes? Who do you complain to? I don't think people knew they could complain to you all. I think that there's a lot more undercurrent that what you all realize, and I know you all mean well and you want to make the right decision. But when you're talking about people that cannot get where they need to be because Medfleet isn't available. I met with both of them, and I sat them down with really tough questions. I've had two occasions where my patient couldn't get to the hospital. When we called them, they said we don't have anything available. I had another time where I needed someone to get there, and they said it's going to be at least 90 minutes, and I had no choice. The patient had no choice, and we had no choice other than to wait or call EMS, the very thing that we don't want to do because we don't want to take EMS off the roads, right? We don't want to do that. I think that they are in over their heads. They don't have enough. They cannot provide for all the needs that is happening in Citrus County. We have so many elderly people that are coming down here. They're getting sicker and sicker. We're getting larger and larger. And I think that considering businesses and being loyal to businesses, I think that's a great idea, and I believe in that too. But they have really not provided any kind of quality. In fact, when I had to call them, I hadn't heard from them at all until I actually had to leverage the quality of care that I wanted because, and using competition. Because the only time they have now stepped up their game is when they had the threat of competition. After listening to the presentation that was just given, it just seems to me that this is a decision that is over. We need more services. You're taking away the choice of the citizens, and you are putting patients at risk. What I met with Medfleet, their answer was, if your nurses can't, if I don't have anything available, have your nurses call you in the middle of the night, and then you can call me in the middle of the night and wake me up, and then I will go and try to rearrange ambulances so they can come to your facility. Well, that means that I'm taking services away from another person in order to get what I want because I'm in their grill for our patients. We shouldn't have to do that. Those processes should already be there. There's no quality meetings. There's no utilization review meetings. They had three years to do this, and the only time they're really starting to do it now is because there's the threat of competition, and competition is a really good thing. You are not being disloyal to them because they are being disloyal to you. They're lacking the quality that is necessary and that we demand to take care of our patients here in Citrus County. So to say, let's give it one more year to see what it is that they can do is absurd, and it's going to put patients at risk, and it could cause the demise of a patient. So I know this is a difficult decision, but you're not doing anything other than giving patients a choice and keeping them safe. Thank you for your time.
Next, please.
That's it?
Those are the only ones I swore.
All right, so we're going to close that portion, and now we're going to ask Medfleet to come forward and make their presentation. It's the end. I put it at the end. And before we begin, we'll have you sworn in. Anybody on your team that's going to speak, please?
Actually, so I'll swear in. I'll be the only one speaking for Medfleet right now. And these are two prospective local facilities. They were on clear the last process, so they are looking to be sworn in since they have comment as a healthcare facility.
Would you like them to talk during the five minutes?
Yes, absolutely.
We'll let them talk during the five minutes then.
Okay, so.
You ladies are going first. You're going to speak the five minutes.
My name is Jennifer Russell. I'm the ED Director at TGH Crystal River. I'm with the gentleman from HCA. I never received a survey. I've never spoken to anybody from Ecare. And also, as far as the comment, as Medfleet was not available. Sorry. As far as Medfleet not being available during the evacuations for the hurricanes, Medfleet had trucks at our door 24/7 to evacuate our hospital to get the patients out safely. We organized with Jeff and his team, even now for transports, if we have an issue, we call Jeff directly. I can't say that I've had any issues with that. We have direct communication with them, and they do their best to correct what needs to happen. We have no complaints from the ED for us getting our patients out of the ED, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Wells. I'm the Director of the Freestanding. I think the last time I saw some of you, I came out saying, it's a boy. I remember. I want to talk about the business model because I had a whole thing I was going to talk about, but but I'm listening to what's going on, and it's my understanding that both of the hospitals, mine and the HCA hospital, has put in for a COPCN. So if you're going to allow this company to come in, we already have Med Fleet, and they're going to allow two more from the hospitals to maybe come in, you're going to saturate this market. And the return on investment is not going to be there for four COPNs. I personally would have to say, I would like to keep it local. The hospitals, I think continuity care would be best served for patients if the hospitals got their COPNs, and then they were able to transport their patients from the nurse that took care of them to the nurse that's going to take care of them. That is the best way to do this. But to have an outside company come in and saturate the market before our local hospitals have had the opportunity, I don't think that's a really good idea. I will also say that nobody came and spoke with me. I did not give them any data, but I will share with you that I also share Jennifer's. I've had no problem getting in touch with Jeff or Mark. 3:00 AM, they've never not answered my phone call. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go back to Med Fleet, and you get 20 minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. So as you've heard, yep, there's going to be some things that were brought up earlier that we're going to not be in agreement with.
You say your name first, please.
I'm sorry, Jeff Taylor. I'm the chief operating officer for Med Fleet Ambulance. So quick history about Med Fleet, just to put it all in perspective. We've been here as a company in West Florida for 31 years this year. We're not coming up from any other area we're here. We've been a staple part of the market for 31 years. Why did we come here? Citrus County. 2021, Nature Coast was failing. That's nothing new to people. Everybody here voted on that. Everybody knew what was going on. So we came in at the request of Nature Coast to help with the system, and we did that. We have our infrastructure here. We committed to leases and things before we even had the COPCN up here because of the agreement that we had we would come in here. So we started with that. We got our building. We put trucks up here, and I made some notes on the conversation earlier because we're all under oath, and I guess there's a little confusion that was brought forward that I'm going to address, and that is, I want to be really clear as to what services we offer. Tell you about the overall, we're part of a national company. We've got operations in New York, in Texas, in South Dakota. We have multiple operations in Florida, so we are not a small company. We are part of a much larger parent corporation with, lack of a better term, very deep pockets that supports the things that we need to do. So I wanted to make sure you understood that piece. In this county, there are four ground transport providers that are licensed by you as the commission to provide ground ambulance transport. That's Citrus County Fire, your 911 provider, Tampa General Hospital, it's Ocala, HCA Florida Corporation, and it's Med Fleet. And here's where the distinction starts, because as they, they're smart. I will give them credit. They said with Med Fleet's presentation, they called into question some things. Here's what I would tell you. Non-emergency ambulance transport, even by Medicare's own definition, references things, and you'll see in the packet that's been provided, references cars, wheelchairs, stretchers, buses, taxis. It does not say that it has to be in an ambulance. Were they right in one thing? Yes, you're right. We don't offer wheelchair. We don't. And we have not offered much in the way of stretcher, that non-medical transportation here. And the reason why is because we don't want to be distracted. We want to make sure we're providing the ambulances that the facilities need, and as you've heard, with the exception of a couple, and I'll show you the data, we've been doing that. If you look at these existing agreements that we have, we have a whole host of agreements that are out in front of you on this document with the various hospitals, with Vitas, with chapters, with ClearSky. We did meet with ClearSky because we had not heard any complaints, and we met with them, and there was a term used earlier that, okay, I've got your number. Now I'm going to be in your grill. I welcome it. If anybody has complaints, pick up the phone and call. Let me know. You have stated as a board, you haven't received complaints when we were here a month ago. So I would tell you, we're kind of in the same mindset. Here's the other piece. You know, as you look at this, the surveys, the surveys, I would tell you, are misleading. If I were to ask the general public, what's the difference between a stretcher van and an ambulance, more often than not, they're not really going to understand, and it's not an insult to the public. It's just not their line of business. It's not what they do. They know that I'm bed confined, and I need to go from point A to point B. Does not mean that I need oxygen, cardiac monitoring, a ventilator, an air vo pump, IV pumps. I don't need all of this necessarily, but that's what we offer. When, we should have been asking, what are your needs? Instead of tainting the questions and saying, how often does your facility require non-emergency transport, and in parentheses, that's qualified as advanced life support and basic life support? Things to consider. If we weren't providing, if Med Fleet wasn't providing that service from an ambulance perspective, I offer you to talk to the fire chief because they're the only other at the time licensed ambulance provider in the county. So was his department running the dialysis calls that have been brought forward? The rehab calls that have been brought forward? I highly doubt it because if I know that fire chief, and we've had lots of conversations about many things, he would have been on the phone with me saying, Jeff, what are you guys doing? We can't run these calls. These are your calls. And in fact, when we do talk about the ambulances, up until two weeks ago, we were not running skilled nursing facility transports into an emergency department or from an adult living facility into an emergency department. Why? Because they were considered 911 calls. Now, in conversation, the chief's like, no, you guys take them. It's okay. I said, okay, I need that in writing, and he did, and everything is good. So we're still within our COPCN, and we're functioning fine with that. We're getting the transportation on an ambulance side done. I'll be the first to admit, we don't do wheelchair, and stretchers is secondary to our core mission. Okay? I think that's some of the big components that we need to pay attention to. I want to go through real quickly. We offer advanced life support, which are paramedics, and they include things like cardiac monitors, ventilators, IV pumps, things like that, all right? And that's specialty care as well as paramedic. We have advanced life support, and then we have critical care paramedics that do the more advanced components. Basic life support, they can do CPR, splinting, stop blood, things like that. Stretcher, non-medical, right? They don't carry any medical supplies because they're a stretcher van, and there are six of those providers already in the county who are doing this business. So when the surveys come back and say that these SNFs are saying, well, we need ambulances every day, okay, let's go look at the data. I believe it was Always There, ALF, and Memory Care have done five transports in the last three years. Aspire at Brentwood, 17 transports in three years. Avante at Inverness, 12. Citrus Health and Rehab, four. Diamond Ridge, 16. I think you get the message. They're not using ambulances, and even though the surveys would tell you otherwise based upon what's been provided by Ecare, they're not requesting ambulance services. The volume in Citrus County, and he's right, we lost calls. I've worked in this industry for, this is my 39th year, and I will tell you, I have yet to find any ambulance company or 911 service that will guarantee you 100% on time. There are too many variables to guarantee that they're going to be there 100% of the time, on time. And if they tell you that, I would tell you to dig deep and look at their history. Now, here's Ecare, not saying anything bad about the company. They operate in Juan County, and I didn't go down and do a deep dive and say, hey, well, what are your customers say about you? And it was interesting because we started out the conversation a month ago, and you guys said, show me the need. So now, where they're saying, well, now Med Fleet's stepping up, what I would tell you is, then why didn't they come to the table as required by the COPCN application and say, here's the convenience, which they brought up today, not before, and here's the need, here's the need of what the community needs? Didn't do it. So now, they've had a chance to regroup, see what we've put in, what they've put in, what we put in again, and we've gone back and forth. All right? So yes, we have lost two calls according to every bit of data that we have from every customer that's called us. In these nine facilities that they bring forward, we've done 76 transports, and we've lost two. Okay? I want to keep that in perspective. Now, the other thing comes up, a little bit painful. When you talk about fee schedules, and I'm not here to insult anybody's intelligence, there's retail rates, there's wholesale rates, and then there's the good old government rates, Medicare and Medicaid, okay? On a retail rate, which is what we post, we are very close to the fire department for their 911 stuff, and if you look at the fee schedule that I've included in the board packet, or in the packet for the board, I would also draw attention to two things. In Ecare's application, they said they, number one, they didn't provide a fee schedule. They said they were going to follow the approved Citrus County fee schedule. So I called the fire chief. I said, what am I missing? Is there an approved fee schedule? He says, well, it's ours. Okay. Can you send that to me? Well, yeah, okay. So I get that. I hate to break the bad news, but what Ecare has proposed, if in fact, and there's nothing to say that they have because they haven't provided it, if they just said they're going to use the approved fee schedule, you have a problem because that's 17.2% under Medicare allowable. So that's what they proposed. And I had a conversation with the chief. I said, chief, you need to up your rates. This is not about, let's gouge the citizens or the facilities in this county. OIG says you're not supposed to charge below Medicare allowable without two different things being met, a fair market valuation, okay? And the other piece is, you have to be able to show that there are special causes. Now, fire chief and the board may have special causes to why he doesn't need to charge 17. They can't do that. They're private industry. There's not a special cause. Now, they'll have to go through a fair market evaluation, but 17.2% is not allowable by the OIG to the best of my career's knowledge. Okay? Fleet, okay, let's talk about that. We have 33 ambulances in the Med Fleet division. We own 21 more in our second division, which is based out of Lakeland. It's a little ways away. I get that. But I would also tell you, when the hurricanes hit and we had to evacuate Crystal River Hospital, we pulled some of those units over here to help with that evacuation, did not have to impact the fire department. And in fact, the next day, when they were still shut down, I posted at no charge, at no value, in fact, at lost revenue, I posted a critical care unit at the front door to that hospital because there were still people knocking on the door trying to get in because it was a hospital, and we were there. We didn't ask for anything. I called Linda. I said, what do you need me to do? She says, I don't know what I'm going to do with these people. They're getting there. I guess we're going to have to call 911. I said, timeout. Let me call the fire chief. I asked the chief, do you mind? Because it's a respect, right? He's the fire chief of the county. He's your public safety administrator. We have an agreement with the county. Do you mind if I post a unit there? He's like, my God, that'd be great. So we did all day long. Didn't see a single patient, but we had our highest qualified unit there. In case somebody came in and was really sick, what we'll refer to as big sick, we could have treated, transported to a right facility. If you look at our company, we have been involved in this industry for a very long time, and Med Fleet, just Med Fleet alone, I have our senior vice president of government relations sitting in the back, who has been in this ambulance business, sorry, Mark, even longer than me, and he's been ahead, the head, the president of the Florida Ambulance Association, the American Ambulance Association. So we are actively involved in those things. But I would tell you this, Med Fleet's involved in Florida Ambulance Association, American Ambulance Association, Florida EMS Advisory Committee member on pediatric emergency care and critical care ground and air transport, as well as being a recognized NAMT training center and national faculty on our payroll, as well as an American Heart Association Training Center. We also are a training center for Pasco, Hernando State College, and the School of EMS. So I'm actually doing good this time. Last time, I ran out, right? In closing, your decision today, yes, I would say it's pivotal. I think integrity is everything, and I can tell you, there's a degree of nausea as I sit in this room today because people that have told me one thing have flipped the switch and gone over here on things. Everybody's got to look in the mirror, and they got to live with themselves on that. Here's what I would tell you. We've demonstrated that we've met the need here, ambulance need, which is the only thing the conversation should be about today, is the ambulance need there. Not, do we need more wheelchair vans? Not, do we need more stretcher vans? Do we need more ambulances? You have those four licensed providers already. You have six already in the county to provide the ancillary transports. And I would beg of you to go back and look at the survey that was turned in by the fire department and say, what were they asking for? You're asking for some of these centers that, or some of the data came back that, oh, they use your service every day. No, you don't. I've already provided you that data. You don't. Diamond Ridge said, we use them every day. Sorry. You don't. ClearSky, in the room, she's right. I told her, be in my grill. She said, I'm going to be in your grill. I said, great, I'll take it. Had to call her three weeks after that to say, haven't heard anything. Where are we at? Well, it's been okay. Okay, I'll take that. I will take that because before, there was a lot against that. There's been a lot of misinformation, a lot of what I would, lack of a better term, being a good old boy that I am, just a lot of smoke and mirrors on this. Look over here because what I want is over here. I don't do that. I've been straight and genuine every time I've been before this board, every conversation, every email that we've had since I've been in Med Fleet for the last three and a half years. I'm not here to play games because they're right. People's lives are in the balance, and I'll give you an example. If you go back in 2004 in Pinellas County, before the franchise model was implemented, there were people dying down there. There were. Because if I cross this line, that's your call over there. I'm going to stay in my house over here. And I find it ironic, after our last meeting, Ecare catches me in the hallway, we're talking a little bit, Jeff, there's plenty to go around. No, really, there's not. Well, we want a model where you take one and we take one. I got text messages from the chief, from their own statement, saying, we're not here to take your business from you. I'm sorry, I might be dumb in math, but what is if you take one and I take one? What did you just cut me down to? Half! Ask the people in the audience, your constituents, could you take a half of a 50% pay cut? Now, they talked about us hiring locally, that's all we've done up here, and when we couldn't get enough up here, we did bring people from Hernando County and even Pasco County, but they work up here. We have people that live in this community, that work in this community, that go to school here. I understand their desire, but I'm telling you, from everything that is true to our heart, we're meeting our mission, and we're providing that service. There's no established demand that has been presented, at least that's been on the screen today, and I'll do my own public records request, and I'll get their entire packet, which I heard is about a foot tall, and that's good. It'll give me something to work for. Maybe we are missing something, but at the end of the day, I know we're not missing life and death calls, contrary to what the physician was saying, who, by the way, has been the third time up here with one version of this company or another. Okay? I don't know, I'm at a loss of what else to say other than, we have come to you in good faith. We've met the need of the community. We've been forward leaning and forward facing every time, and we continue to do that. Now, you have a tough decision. Tough decision. Do you take a company that you really know nothing about, who has spoken all these miraculous things? A NICU unit, just for the record, takes a nurse with over 2,000 hours of NICU training, okay? So I'm not sure how they're going to do that, but that's up to them to decide if you allow them in the community. I have a minute and a half left, so I'll close with this. We've been honest. We've been upfront. I've never steered away from you. I've taken your calls. If you ever had questions... I've never steered away from you, I've taken your calls if you ever had questions. And from a complaint or an upset customer, none of you have ever reached out to me. None of you. And, yes, I could go beat down the doors of, of these 40 facilities, and sure, we, we reached out because we didn't understand what they were looking for. At the end of the day, they're looking for non-medical stretchers and wheelchairs, that's the vast majority of what they're looking for, not ambulances. And ambulances should be the only reason we're up here today, to make sure there's enough in here to take care of the county and the community's needs. So with that, I respectfully thank you for my time today. As always, if there's anything I can answer for you, I'm more than happy to. So, thank you.
The end of this will be now open to the general public, you will have three minutes to speak on this. If there is anyone in the public that would like to speak specifically to this issue, you have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity, I'd like to be sworn because I'm going to spit out a couple of facts and I'd like to do that under oath. Yes, I do. My name is Robert Contorno. I, I, I'm up here for a couple of different reasons. First of all, selfishly motivated, I am the owner of the property that they are moving into. Secondly, I serve this country with Blackwater, and I've seen some horrific things, you know, way past ambulance care. And third, I was a state legislative trustee for a number of years, up until last year. So I understand government, I understand blood and guts, and I'm also in the private sector. Now, I'm up here for a couple of reasons. I own the Pennsia Penny Plaza, Plaza 40, save a lot, many storage, and building sprinkles from Pinellas County out to Lee County. And when I have multi-unit buildings, I'm not too worried. If I've got seven or eight tenants in a building, one of them goes sideways, I'm not bleeding, I'm not losing money, it's not going to hurt me. When I have a single tenant building, I do my research and I do my homework. I can't afford to have a tenant go sideways, especially something like this. The building that they're leasing is a large building, there's two buildings on the, on the property, and we're actually constructing a third building to accommodate their ambulances because their ambulances are tall. The primary building there has an amphitheater-like training facility in it with monitors and screens and projections and seats. There's office areas, it's a high-security building, there's cameras all around the buildings, there's a high-tech alarm system, there's a secure room for medications. They, we had to actually accommodate them and invest additional money and capital into this building to suit their needs. This building's approaching a million dollars, it's well over half a million dollars. They've made a commitment on the building, and they have an option to purchase the building in the future. This is not a 500-square-foot corner office with a broken-down garage behind it. The building is within a couple hundred yards of the Sun Coast, right on Cardinal. It was formerly Max Video, a security company, to give you an idea of what the building's like. So I did some research into this company, and I found that their D M B report is solid, their credit report is solid, the references they provided me were solid, as well as the public. I'm involved in a lot of communities, I've been here once before with an engineer and an attorney asking for a variance, which was approved, and thank you for that. But I had some discussions with some other commissioners that I see frequently, like Jack Mariano. And we had a discussion about a study saying that there's an increased aging population, there's a need for ambulatory care, it's going to increase. And then you get into the fact, like from my days in Blackwater, when you get into an emergency situation, when a declared emergency, a state of emergency is called, it is ambulatory care, things of this nature, which are dependent upon for the safety of the residents. By having one company in this county like this with ambulances is crazy, it's ludicrous. If something goes wrong, if their building burns down, if their ambulances break down, if the demean, if the demand overwhelms what they can provide, it's a responsibility and it's private industry, you, you can't deny it, you have to let them come in. I'm sorry, I'm over, but I don't know if I fall in the three or the five-minute
The three.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time, I certainly ask for a thumbs up, and I think it's a good addition to the community.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm a firm believer in competition, and it seems to me like
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys know me, I'm sorry. I'm Mary Cedar. But I'm a firm believer in competition, this is my speech. And also, I want to say really quick that I think this coming in could help the other company that's already here, here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Dr. Carmen Kubicek, I am a retired pediatrician. And as you can see, I do support that we do need another ambulance service. Med Fleet, I know, has been around now for 39 years. I have to say that I disagree with Commissioner Kennard, I think it's up to them to really show us how successful they are. He comes up and gives us numbers, but I actually don't see any stats. It's concerning to me as a pediatrician that 35% of women here have no prenatal care. And this is really frightening because the first couple of minutes is vital for the child to get, you know, the emergency services they need. I was impressed with the fact that, you know, they are N A L S, P A L S, and A C L S certified, and they're available. The other thing that we all know is that this county is growing, and unfortunately, the majority of the people moving here are retirees, and many of them have medical problems. And so, why are we going to wait until we actually have the necessity to have extra ambulances? We need to be ahead of this and make sure that everyone is qualified to be able to be in those ambulances to provide services. An emergency room physician commented how vital it is to get their patients out of the emergency room into tertiary centers, and unfortunately, you can't wait around for an ambulance an hour or 30 minutes, or even 20 minutes to provide that service for them. So I think it's very important for us to think about, ruminate, and be ahead of this before we actually fall way behind and try to make up for it. So I'm in favor of having Ecare in this community, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Larry Friedman, I live in Sugar Mill Woods. I don't do this very often, and I'll be brief. I still haven't heard of a compelling need for another provider. As we all know, surveys and polls can be very misleading, open to interpretation, so I'd like you to weigh that in regards to that data. If you have what appears to be some issues, I suggest that you work through them with your current provider. Incumbent providers are almost always able to be made to look bad in comparison to interlopers. Of course, there are going to be issues, there always will be, with any and all providers. It appears that there are some minor communications issues, so rather than make a change, I suggest you work to resolve the issues. I think with additional, from what I've heard, I think with additional providers, you might have them stretched thin financially, and then you won't have the attention that you do seek to get from these providers. Less can be better in a case like this. And there is a business adage, I know you're politicians, excuse me for saying that, but it's called Follow the Money. And I have to add this, in terms of presentations, the gentleman's presentation for Meds Fleets was hands-down much better. He appears to be familiar with the board, and he appears to have been here in the past. He has an excellent grasp of the facts and the issues, he was well-prepared, and he was passionate. And that is what I would want in a service provider. He's honest and upfront, he takes your calls and he calls, he calls the board. My vote is no additional service providers. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Before you get started, just as a reminder, we will need a green card filled out if you're speaking on this issue, thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge. I've been coming to these meetings now for about a little over a year, and I've stressed to you, I don't know how many times, about infrastructure, 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 and the needs that we do have. I think we do need more ambulances, but after hearing the presentation by E today, I'm also now made aware that we need stretchers or transports as well. If our current provider is not able to offer both, which we do need, then I would say vote for having an additional provider. If at the same time, the old provider is able to add things that will uplift and create a situation where we will be getting provisions on, on both sides, then go that way. It's devil's advocate, whichever way you go, competition is good, yes, but at the same time, someone that's doing a great job is also better, because you can work with them. So the weighing of this comes down to what do we really need? Are our needs being currently met? And what will our needs be in the future? And use that to guide yourselves to the correct decision. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this issue?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Deb Spence, Crystal River. I've worked in hospital administration for 37 years, and 30 of it was invited, was involved with administration, including transportation. And one of the things that struck me today with the presentation was the comment that I can always call, I think it was Mike, who, I don't know if Mike is general manager or owner or what it is. And if you have to resort to calling someone for regular routine help, there's a systematic problem. Because that could be handled at the lower level without any additional calls, say, hey, we don't have any ambulances, hey, the ambulance hasn't shown up yet. I don't have a dog in the hunt, I can't tell you which way is better, but I can say that that was a real alert to me, that there's a problem within Med Flight. With hurricane help, I was throughout this county, doing work and removing, removing stuff, anyway. But I realized just how big this county is, up to Red Level in Inglis and down to Helmand Sasser and out through Floral City. We are a big, big county. And I can't imagine that we couldn't use a little more help and a little more emergency help. If you look at our statistics, look at all of our accidents that require ambulances, that's increasing every single day, all those 911 calls that fire can't handle because there's too many of them. So who's the next call? Who's the next one and the next one before we really start to expand and to lose all of our calls? There should be a time limit, and I have to, to blame you guys for not having any type of criteria for them to meet, to come back and report to you, to say, hey, we had 37 calls this month, we had this type of response. That should be almost a monthly agenda item for you to know what's going on in the county. And I think that's why you've got the competition going on right now, is that you don't know. We heard a lot of facts from one company and a little more flacks from the other one, but they didn't match at all. And everybody's under oath here, so I don't know who to believe with numbers. And I think that's, that's kind of a tough thing, that numbers say a lot. But I do ask you to kind of look at the fact that you should not have to call the manager or the director in order to get help. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian R., and I live, currently live in Pine Ridge. Moved here in 2019 after receiving a phone call. That phone call has impacted my life, as well as my mother and the rest of my family's life, and it, it basically stems to the lack of fundamental services to our elderly community. My father had a heart attack. They sent a B L S unit instead of an A L S unit to a cardiac patient, knowing, well, that should not be that statistic. Sat in the front yard for 22 minutes and then transported him to Citrus Memorial Hospital at the time before H C A took it over. My parents lived just outside the Inverness city limits on Gospel Island Road. The county got the phone call, at the time, Nature Coast was the other provider, they were on probation and they had to take some calls, so they sent their unit. And as a direct representation of that, there's a good chance my father would have been here today with us, had they sent an A L S unit, or if the county would have taken the call. And for that, you know, I do believe competition is good. Lack of resources is never a good thing. The burden is, you know, on the board here to either confirm or deny their application, but I mean, more is always better. Having, having the resources for the growing community is never a bad thing, in my opinion. And I definitely support their coming into the county and offering these resources. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ernesto Rubio with a resident here of Citrus County, and I will fill out my green sheet. So the one thing I wanted to say to you is, there's been a lot of talk about services and blue sky availability, but I'm here to remind you that we need services during our gray skies. During, during the incident through COVID, as you know, I was your health officer in this county, and I can tell you, there were days that we were having conversations with the ambulance and the hospital providers as we had zero ambulance availability in our community, and there were no ambulances to come to our rescue from any other county, because this was an incident that affected the entire nation. We've also had disasters with hurricanes that affected the entire state of Florida, and we didn't have any availability of any ambulances coming outside of the county to assist us. So as you deliberate your decision today, understanding that you've heard other people say, the availability of more resources is never a bad thing, and that is especially true during gray skies. So think about that through your deliberations. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon again, Sabrina Watson. I just want to remind people, as I mentioned earlier, that one of the strategies of oppressive regimes is removing one slice of the pie at a time until the entire pie is gone. That really applies to things like monopolies as well, which are actually against the law in this country. Some of these people are looking to do good, but many are in league with government gangsters, hence fake legislation to protect themselves from their crimes. If lobbyists and government gangsters are allowed to continue with this path, you will have no rights and no retribution. Your children will continue to be taken for sex trafficking by CPS. Your parents will continue to die either accidentally or intentionally without recourse. Your family members will continue to have their savings raided by those who claim to be treating them for cancer while they die a slow, painful death. I am referring to the Florida Free Kill Law here, some of you should be familiar with it. I want to ask you a question, is this ambulance item not the very same thing? Is this not keeping a monopoly, likely funded through some kind of backdoor deal by a lobbyist? Is this really what is good for the citizens? Should your family member have to wait an untold amount of time, one, two, six hours or more, for help simply to profit someone else in a time of crisis? Make no mistake, folks, this is about money, depending on the outcome. I want to remind the people on this board that citizens do not simply have to allow criminal actions any longer. They can be taught and they will have support. And if this board makes decisions that jeopardizes or endangers lives, there is no such thing as blanket immunity, as you're all going to soon find out. So make, make decisions that actually are what the people pay you to make decisions for, which has protected them. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Since I'm in uncharted territory here, being that we've had a public hearing, is there, do we have rebuttal by the applicant?
I, I didn't hear that in your list of how you were going to handle the hearing. There's nothing in the ordinance as to the process.
Okay. So the public hearing is now closed, we'll take it back to the board, and board members will open it up for discussion or take a motion. Your pleasure.
Well, I will, I guess I'll go ahead and get us started here, and then I will make a motion. Couple things from the presentation, the applicant's presentation, I'll go back to. It's not Commissioner Kennard's opinion as to whether or not the burden falls on the applicant, the burden does fall on the applicant to demonstrate a need. The burden does fall on the applicant to demonstrate a need. When they make application, they've got to show that there's a need there. That's, that's the threshold. The, during their presentation, there was discussion about projected growth of the county. That's not a current need. It's a projection of growth. Increased calls to Med Fleet, that's not a current need. That means there's just increased calls. They're providing, they're providing a service, and they're getting increased calls. That's, again, that's not demonstrating a need. Current health ranking in Citrus County, that's not demonstrating a current need. The company's presidents love for our community. I love our community too, but that doesn't demonstrate a current need. The list goes on and on. I won't walk through all of them. But as I listen there, they, they gave a nice presentation, but they didn't demonstrate a need. The, the, I, I will tell you, I started listening a little bit more keenly when the second presenter with their company, and I'm sorry, I forgot her name.
Caitlin.
Yes, sorry about that. When she talked about their surveys, that caught my interest until the two hospitals in the county both said, we were not surveyed. So if I, if TG, if TGH and CMH both said, we weren't surveyed, but just the hospital names are on those surveys, if I can't trust you a little bit with your surveys, I can't trust any of them. Because it sounds to me like those surveys may have, may have, been written to demonstrate a predetermined outcome, which I believe is, is what happened here. And then after, I totally did not expect either of the hospitals to come up. I have spoken to both of them, didn't hear that there was a need, didn't hear that there was a problem with Med Fleet. But then here they show up and say, they've got surveys with our, our hospital name on them, and we weren't surveyed. Or we don't know anybody in the hospital who was surveyed. That's a concern. So the surveys, in my opinion, are out the window. The only fact that I heard from the applicant's presentation was that Med Fleet has posted a help wanted ad for Citrus County. That's fact. That's what we should be basing this on.